This conference will now be recorded.
Justin, you're muted.
Can you hear us now, Tom?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. So we're just calling to order the select board at 6:00 PM and all three members are present here in the library. The first order of business is welcoming Courtney Morehouse from VRPC for an update on the culvert in the center of the village. So thank you for joining us, Courtney.
Thank you for having me. So we'll talk about the culvert and I also included the Loop by Road updates as well in those designs since those were ready too. So I thought, well, being two persons, let's go. So this is just to review the last grant that you had through the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness or MVP grant. Looked at the three alternat- well, four alternatives, I guess, but three main alternatives to replacing the culvert, which is currently a 10-foot culvert with either a 15 and 18 or a 25-foot. And then there was sort of an add-on additional study that looked at putting flood barriers as well along these. So these are how they cost out or how they were spec'd out and what they would do in terms of inundation in a 100-year flood, current day 100-year flood. And then in the last meeting with you all, we looked at the H&amp;H, which stands for hydrologic and hydraulic study. So that looks at both the future precipitation predictions and the current precipitation predictions and how much rain is coming to that one spot. And then the hydraulic portion, which is the amount of flow in cubic feet per second of water coming in through there. So you look at both of those things when you try to determine whether it'll flood, how much the structure itself will accommodate, et cetera. So that H&amp;H study was run for the current culvert under both current and future conditions, as well as a 25-foot increase culvert, but really it'll end up being a bridge, in a both current and future storm event. We're now showing you the future events because the current culvert kind of passes some of our current storm events, even though they're changing rapidly.
It did remarkably well this time.
It did really well, even if we wanted like-
Even with the two-inch range or three-inch, one time we had a four-inch fall and it, there were still clearance.
Yeah, so the six inches when you start to get that 25-year and that's what Mass DOT uses to design standard crossing, a bridge or a culvert. They look at the 25-year. For your all's purposes, we're also looking at the 50 and 100 years for those worst-case scenarios, considering that this is the main vein that connects the fire department with the rest of the town. And for emergency services, if any road stays open, it needs to be this route. So you want to, in a 100-year flood, when the fire truck and everything, police, emergency services is needing to get across, you want to be sure that in the biggest flood you have service. So this inundation map, it is one you saw before. This is a 100-year flood in future conditions, which is an increase of 72% amount of precipitation from what is currently at 100-year flood with eight inches of rain in a 24-hour period. In the future, 100-year flood, and by future I mean 2070, what they predict 100-year flood will be is 14 inches in a 24-hour period. So, you know, again, a 72% increase. The 100-year flood, the bigger floods are the ones that are expected to become more, to increase in volume more than a smaller flood, right? So we'll get, more frequently, we'll get these bigger floods and more frequently, those bigger floods will have home water. I don't know if that, if that makes sense. In terms of the hydraulics, i.e. how much water is flowing into that spot, we're expected to see almost double the amount of present day versus future, right? So currently, 100-year flood is about, you know, 1,480 cubic feet of water coming through that culvert per second. But that'll increase to, you know, almost 3,900, so quite a bit more. And as a result, you see the inundation map. It floods the road slightly. It probably would completely shut down emergency, but it would be enough to slow you down. And it certainly would flood town hall and the surrounding areas, especially the triom properties on the right there, or on the east, I should say. So the replacement in 100-year for a 25-foot span, this is the results of the H&amp;H study, is that it would prevent the road from getting flooded. And I'll show you the elevation to the depths in a future slide. They put it on the actual schematics of the design. So you still have some, you still have quite a bit of flooding, especially on the triom properties on the right there. You have it coming up in the town hall. You might have some basement flooding. And again, this is a 100-year storm, so this should be a, you know, very small percentage storm, a 1% in any given year. And then for the design standard that we, that Mass DOT will see, they look at the 25-year storm. So you can see here, it really kind of doesn't impact as many properties, you know, except for this 437. And I think the flood wall there is what's going to be the main thing that prevents that from being the worst effect. So we'll jump into the designs. And the designs are available on the website, right? Yeah, the designs are, I didn't want to speak. The designs are available on the website in full, so if you really want to dig in and nerd out, they're there. But hopefully this will be broken down a little bit more. So on the right here, this is the sort of stripped away of all of the context, right? The wing walls stay the same as what they are now. They'll get rebuilt and reinforced, but the actual direction and angle and everything will be, will remain the same. So there won't be much change to that. The span of the bridge itself will also remain the same. It's about 38, 40 feet. That, it's not going to get any bigger that way, the span itself. It'll just be the opening that basically gets widened from 10 to 25 feet. And then in the plans, which I don't go into here, they also show the wetland delineation, the de-watering plan, all of that, all of those details, which we don't need to. They also have some, they've also outlined some riprap here, which when it gets rebuilt, you might also want to look into how you could do some sort of like a living shoreline so that it's not just riprap. It's also roots and willows and other stuff that'll reinforce the bank on that downstream side. And then on the upstream side, it's the floodplain walls basically that exist there currently. I think that's kind of all through this one. We'll get into more of the details, but any questions on this, because this is the most detailed, yeah.
So where you're showing the riprap, that's on this side of the road?
That's on this side of the road, yes. Along the opposite side of the post office.
Right, so there is a stone wall there, so that would be-
So that will be basically replaced in riprap, you know? Like it'll be, because it'll, I expect that it'll have some disturbance, so they're basically going to rebuild that, yeah.
I noticed on the, it's in small writing there, Mickey, but it says remove existing riprap below 1246. I didn't know those little things I could make for the project.
Yeah. So this is a cross-section view looking both from the upstream and the downstream. And these footings are now finalized. They basically follow the geotechnical analysis. And this is sort of the depth that they put the footings at. This is the existing culvert, so it will move slightly to be more in line with the stream. And then the opening will be no bigger. So it'll be a natural stream bottom throughout as opposed to a closed stream bottom, which is in theory good for fish and all that. Obviously, you have the dam upstream and downstream, so how many fish are actually flowing through this, I'm not really sure, but that is the theory. And that does meet stream crossing standards, so when it goes to Mass DOT, it'll sort of, it'll check that box. Some of the things that have been added is the railing to, and there's a walkway, which we'll see in the next slide. But the railing here to accommodate some sort of pedestrian walkway. And the style of that is very adaptable to fit the character of Monterey. So this, they put this here just as an example of what that might look like. But they wanted me to let you know that if there's a style that is more appropriate to match like the rural character of the town, then they can sort of look at that and present some options for that. And then on the right, this is the downstream view. And you can see the riprap at the end for scour protection within the actual stream bed itself as sort of an apron to slow that down and disallow it scouring out and transporting sediment downstream. And then all the way on the right is what we call the freeboard depth. So that's another thing that Mass DOT is going to look at, is during different storm intervals, what is the depth of the water and how much wa- how much space is there between the top of the structure and the top of the waterline, right? So in a 10-year flood, you have it coming to about, you know, three-quarters of the way up, 25. And then 100-year, which actually hits the head wall, but it won't come over the crest of the road. It in fact won't even, it won't come to the, in theory anyway, I mean, no predictions. It won't come to the pedestrian side. So the bridge will take a beating, but it won't interrupt service. Any questions on that? Any other details I shouldn't, I shouldn't go over? So 25-foot wide and then 10-foot from the stream bed is sort of a general opening.
And presumably it's two lanes, right?
It's two lanes, yeah. The walkway itself is one, is an eight-foot walkway.
So then wouldn't that be, so are we talking about putting in a one-way bridge?
No, 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 I'll show you.
Okay.
We'll get to that. So this is generally what it looks like. Obviously, the railway, the railways, the curving on the road look different because you have the walkway and you have, you can do different sort of roadside curve. The railing details that they gave us, again, hopefully to change. And then ignore the wing walls on both of these structures because they're going to fit what's currently there in terms of angles. But this just gives you a visual as to like what the character will look like. It's all precast, precast and structure in eight-foot chunks and then built in within those precasts. So this is the cross-section view with the walkway. So it's a walkway on one side. And the question that we sort of are trying to figure out is which side is most appropriate? So here are some things to consider. The waterline placement currently is on the town hall side. And that's sort of the most direct route so that that water main stays within that side. The engineers would like to bury the water main in the walkway for two reasons. One, it makes it so that they don't have to bury it under the stream bed and it makes it so that it's not open and exposed and liable to freeze on the outside, right? So building that walkway actually adds opportunity to insulate the waterline while still allowing it to be accessible from the vents. And so wherever we put the walkway, also think about moving the waterline, wherever that is, right? So if it's on the town hall side, the waterline kind of stays where it is. If it's on the other side, then you sort of re-root the water main to go around and then back, which I think it has been before, but it's just one consideration to make is, you know, where did that go? And then the other thing that we are looking into is the railing on the side of the road. Jim Hunt, the DPDW director, asked if we could take that out so that he can basically raise the plow and plow the sidewalk instead of manually having to plow or shovel the sidewalk. But I guess the question is, you know, which side, which side of the bridge is it most appropriate to put a walkway if in fact that's, you know, what you want to choose to do, given that there's a, there's a crosswalk? So it could go on the library side or the post office side and then use that crosswalk from town hall as a way to connect the downtown area. Or it could, in theory, go from the town hall over and then there'd have to be an easement for some sort of riding way on the triom property to move it around. Thoughts? And you don't have to answer it now, but yeah, I just wanted to sort of put that out there.
Two questions. The walkway is a bit higher than the road?
It is, yeah. And that's to accommodate the waterline. But there'd be a, there'd be a gen- there'd be basically like a gentle ramp up and then down, yeah.
I think if it, if for any reason the walkway were to be on the north side of the bridge, on the upstream side of the bridge,
Yep.
we would probably want to explore having a crosswalk on this side of the bridge.
Right, exactly, so that you could connect with post office and library.
Yeah. If that was easy to have a crosswalk on this side of the road, then, then that's easy. But if for some reason we can't, it seems like it makes sense to have it on the downstream side of the bridge. So you can cross the crosswalk coming to and from town hall, between town hall and the rest of the public buildings. I mean, other than the church, maybe we just need two crosswalks.
Okay, so I'm, no, I'm just sketching stuff. If it's on the north side, the upstream side, it means the waterline can run straight.
Yep.
But we need an additional crosswalk, plus we have to worry about an easement with the triom property.
Correct.
If it's on the south side,
Yep.
we probably don't have to worry about an additional crosswalk, but we do have to worry about moving the waterline so that it flows around that.
Yes.
But we don't have the easement. Is there any other problem with moving it beside the waterline? Which seems like it could be significant, I don't want to downplay that, but-
I mean, I, I don't think there are any other, have we discussed any other issue? I don't think there are any other issues with it going on the downstream besides the waterline. And then the question of like, what is, what are the future plans of Monterey when it comes to pedestrian? Like, is there going to be some sort of sidewalk? And if so, which side would go on to? Like, I think that if this is a guess and it goes in a spot, it's going to heavily influence then what pedestrian flow is happening with any future development of the downtown area.
Right.
So it's just something to keep in mind, like where it makes more sense to, for that, for people to walk in. What do they currently do? I mean, when I've been down here, it seems to me like people will go to the town hall and then walk across and then cross the bridge to the post office, or simply drive. And like get, go from town hall and get in their car and then drive to the post office.
We're trying to be outlandish.
Because it's kind of tight, you know? Huh?
We're trying to be outlandish.
Yeah. So it, it is just kind of tight. But if there was a crosswalk, it might make it so that town hall parking is a little more accessible in the downtown area since you're kind, you're fairly limited in parking down here.
I always walk on the south side. Do other people do the same thing?
Yeah.
I mean, I take, I take the crosswalk and then walk on the south side, yeah.
Yeah.
What if the crosswalk were to move to the west of the bridge? Then you could walk on both sides and then cross to the north side and then all your, you'd be on the side of the, of the town halls across the bridge and be at the town hall.
I, I think that part of it also is how people feel about walking by the side of the road, on the north or south side, even on the town side. Like, it, I feel like it's okay to walk and then park it all out of the post office, but I'm a little less certain about, should I do it on this person's property?
Yeah, on people's property. Right, yeah, exactly.
Hi Courtney, has the water company weighed in on any-
Yeah, I mean, I think, and smart here, but will we send the, ask the question? And it sounds like they're amenable to going on either side if what's easiest for the town is that, if what makes most sense goes on the south side, then it's not the biggest hassle. I think the bigger question is, what additional cost would it be? But I don't think there's any loss of pressure and it's not that much more, it's not that much more hassle. It's, it's just like, you know?
Well, it may be. I mean, because it does cross, it starts on this side and then it crosses over there and then you're going to be bringing it back and you've got a lot of drainage going on in the center here on this side. So, I mean, we, we did discuss this when the engineer was here and Lee was pointing out that if you do start moving that waterline around, you're redoing the whole drainage in the center of town potentially because that waterline's got to go below where all those drains are.
Right.
It's going to be deeper and there's, there's drainage on both sides of 23. And so, you know, it, it's, it is a little bit, it's going to be considerably more tricky to do it.
Okay.
If, if the town wants to pay that much more, I mean, if money's not an object and it can be done correctly, I, I don't know if you would go all the way up to the store, which is about where it starts across, to go over to that side.
Right.
I mean, you know, in other words, you could be adding a hundred and, over 100 feet of extra waterline to, to do this, which is not going to be, you know, without cost and effort.
Yeah, so I guess that would be the big question for me in the nears, is how much more does it cost? The walkway itself, does it cost more? And in fact, they, at least initially, think that the walkway isn't going to be that much more expensive because it doesn't increase the span of the road. That the road is big enough as it is to accommodate the walkway. So it's really just, it is, it's more concrete and it's more about the waterline, which we would have to have had rebuilt as a way, given that it's getting replaced there.
Although where it is presently is really, it's a straight shot.
Yeah.
It's pretty much a straight shot. So you're just cutting on one end and cutting on the other end and just connecting.
Yeah.
Kind of argues for sticking on the north side, doesn't it?
Where is the other, you know, here, crossing back over 23, getting across the bridge and crossing back over 23 on the other side.
So it's sort of, yeah, go ahead.
Courtney, can you please just, I don't know if this is within the scope. Could we look into putting a crosswalk on this side of the bridge, between the two sides of 23? Just because if we don't, I, I assume it's not a big deal and we can just add another crosswalk, but we really would need one at that point because otherwise you could get to Bidwell Park back and forth between Bidwell Park and town hall, but you, you come across and you can't get to the post office or the library or the general store.
Yeah.
I assume it's not a big deal, but I don't know.
Yeah, I will ask them what goes into that because it might be, I mean, you own that road. So that's sort of the nice thing about owning the road instead of Mass DOT, is that in some ways you have, as long as you're, as long as you're operating under DOT standards, you can do what you, it's a level decision as to whether you put the crosswalks there.
And what would the easement, what would be necessary for, why is the easement necessary that you mentioned? If it went on the north side, for, for what, for clearance to the property or?
So that you can, so that people can walk.
Okay.
Yeah. Basically, it impedes, it's just outside the right-of-way onto triom property. So you would have an easement to allow people to-
Be walking.
Be walking, yeah, you would be extending the right-of-way, in other words. Yeah. Other thoughts, questions about this section? Outstanding questions we still have. The detour, they still haven't quite figured out how much the road needs to be closed, for how long, if there's a way to do it without closing the road, if there's a way to do it with minimally closing the road. Because as you can see, they've sketched out a detour that I think most of us would agree is fairly difficult. And not just difficult to local folks, but difficult to emergency vehicles, difficult for larger vehicles sending them down Maritown Road. Is not, yeah, it's sort of, I think we all sort of understand that's a tricky scenario.
Trouble actually reading the detour plan.
Yeah, so it's tearing down the road.
Seems like the arrows all conflict with each other.
I know, right? But no, it's, it's basically saying like, this is where they show the signs like, hey, up ahead, you're going to take a right for the detour. The detour is right here, turn right.
Getting around Fairview.
And then to go down and then over to Proview and then back down to, yeah.
And the signs they're showing for both, like then south.
You've had both, yeah, but I, I- I looked at that thing and I'm like, this looks like one of those diagrams where you're like-
They're just showing you like where the, where the signage would go if they did that detour.
It's pretty, I, I get the route, as long as I just ignore your little stuff.
Makes more sense to go right again.
Yeah.
Courtney, to be clear, I mean, it was my understanding, most of this work is going to have to be done keeping one lane open in center of town. Would this be like for a few days when first, when both sides need to be closed?
So that's what we're trying to get them to do, is when we say keep the road open, I mean, keep the road open down to one lane. I don't think there's any scenario in which you're keeping the road open to lane traffic and replacing it, yeah. It's always going to be down to one lane. Their initial response was, we did not know if we can keep the road open at all. And we sort of pushed back on that and we're like, well, please explore it because it is, it would be very difficult to detour us, even if it's road closure for a limited amount of time to get some necessary work done, as much as you can keep the road open during construction, the better.
Well, and the way that Jim has explained it and Sean before him, the way that Jim and Sean have explained it to me is that Fairview Road is really not supposed to have any large trucks on it at all.
Yeah.
So-
So if there is no way to keep the road open, then I think probably we're looking at detouring larger trucks even further away, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I mean, I, that would be an extra, if Jim hasn't already explained that to you or to them, it should be explained, you know, Jim would know the right language, but that we really can't have large trucks on Fairview Road and so we need to keep it open one lane. Because a detour for large trucks on 23 would be like Route 57.
Yeah.
Miles away. Miles away. Yeah, it would be something like that, something crazy. So if that can be extra motivation, we really need to keep it open one lane at a time.
I mean, I, you know, I suspect if, if we had to do a big detour like that for a couple of days, that's one thing. But if you're talking about two years, like, it's really not feasible. There's just too much traffic.
Yeah, I don't think that it would take two years to do the project anyway. Like, I think that would be, if they were closing it, yeah.
It's unclear how long it's going to take to do the culvert on a more smaller road nearby.
Yeah.
Where I feel like they should be able to pop the other one in, but-
So, yeah, like I said, this is one of those things that we continue to be like, okay, what's the timeline? How long will it take? What's the timeline if it's one lane open? How much would you have to close the road, et cetera? Like, that's just an outstanding question overall. And then the cost, because we sort of added, the costs are dependent somewhat on the waterlines being moved and the decision that's made there, the walkway. And then I really want to break, I think we've been trying to push for a breakdown of how much extra is a walkway? How much extra is the walkway on this side versus this side? You know, and then also just like an updated cost estimate. Cost estimate for construction considering that materials and everything else has increased in the last few years, yeah. So we really need those as well and then I emailed them yesterday and I think they're fairly close to having that and so I can. When we get that, I think we'll do another sort of update and just talk about those pieces, yeah. Any other questions from both? All right. So the next steps are them finalizing those pieces, those outstanding questions that we have. And then moving into the mass DOT, what's called Chapter eighty-five review. It's not technically a permit, but you need to pass it. You need to get through Chapter eighty-five review in order to get approval from mass DOT to do the work. So that looks at the stream crossing standards, it looks at all of the regulations and design standards that they have. To have a mark major artery road do some sort of crossing replacement, um so it's the full, you know, it's the whole thing. And that process can take no time, they can just be like, looks good, you've got it all figured out, which is fair. Um or it can take three months um of them being like, and this piece, and this piece, and this piece, so it's very much a back and forth conversation with mass DOT. Um so it's kind of the biggest hurdle to get over and then. After we after we get to that slash concurrent, it's about getting the permits, that's the Conservation Commission, an NOI permit. That is the US ACE four oh four permit, which act, which allows them to dredge in a waterway, and there's a third one that I don't remember, so don't ask me. But then the third permit that also looks at dredging within waterways, so there's basically two permits, one from Army Core and one from, I believe, DEP. Um so all of those permits going through the process with the designs and any changes that those through the through the permitting process, there might be slight changes. That are required to buy under the Conservation Commission or DEP or Army Core depending. Um and that all kind of brings you up to your May deadline where you start to think about as a town, whether you wanna move this forward into a construction phase. Within the next year or two and. Um what I'm what I'm using as May is because that's when the MVP uh grant process opens up again, so you're. You'll probably end up, if you end up saying, yes, of course, as a town, this is what we want to do, um we've got the designs, et cetera. You know, we are DC or whoever could help you put together the grant application for construction. And you would put in there that this is dependent on annual town meeting vote for whatever the match is that you. Need to commit and that match can be a mix of in-kind, but with the cost of the project, I expect that there will also be some cash match that. You'll need to come up with, it'll be ten percent match because you have a reduced match under that grant program, but even so, it's something that the. You as a town will sort of need to figure out is how to budget for that match. And then the final bid documents, yeah.
Uh just to touch on the timeline.
Yeah.
Your. Which annual town meeting would you be expecting the town to be voting on the match at, would it be May twenty twenty-five?
Or twenty twenty-four?
Twenty twenty-four, if that's what you chose to do, like if you chose to go after a grant in twenty twenty-four. For the this year twenty twenty-five cycle, then you'd be looking at doing that annual town meeting. Directly after your grant application.
Would we be likely to have the Chapter eighty-five review completed by next May?
You should, yeah, we, I mean, it's a requirement of our current grant to get the Chapter eighty-five review done and the permitting all done, so. Basically by the June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, you will have all permits and theoretically, if nothing goes wrong. Uh you'll have all permits in place, you'll have final bid documents and final designs stamped by an engineer, you'll basically be shovel ready. Right, what you do with then those shovel ready designs is up to is up to you all, but you'll have everything in place to. Start construction in theory, yeah.
So if we were to vote in May of next year on a match amount, how would we know? What that is, is it based on the estimated cost?
Based on the cost estimates, yeah.
Based on the cost estimates, so we don't have a bid with a contractor yet, we don't, but this is an estimate.
That's an estimate, yeah, and then you basically go to the state and say, here's what the cost of the project is, they're gonna ask you to put a ten percent contingency on it. Or any incidentals, that total amount and then ten percent of that amount is the match amount and so you'll probably cut a little slice off for in-kind. And any other sort of outreach stuff that we can like, the navel in there is in-kind and then whatever remains will be a cash match.
So just theoretically, if the cost estimate for the whole project came in at five million.
Yep.
The state would tell us add ten percent, so that's five point five million.
No, the state would toss that ninety percent, you'd be responsible for ten percent.
Didn't they first add ten percent per contingency, so it's five point five and then we would be responsible for five hundred and fifty thousand? That's what we would put on the town meeting warrant. And then that may not be what the project ends up costing, but we've approved five hundred and fifty thousand.
That's what you will have approved, yeah.
Okay, roughly.
Let's hope it's more like two point two million dollars, two point one million dollars instead of five million dollars, okay, like. I wasn't about to say you have hard to do this.
But that your your math is correct, that's that's basically.
Roughly, yeah, okay, thank you.
I was looking at the two point one earlier, like, why is it saying five?
Yeah, because the two point one was the conceptual design estimate, yeah.
I I'm sure it will be more than that, but I I'm really hoping it's not.
Yeah, that's good, and we can live there until we get told otherwise.
Yeah.
Uh okay, any other questions about this timeline, the costs, the process, all that, that stuff? Yeah, that is.
Uh in the past and perhaps in the present, the old stone dam has been an issue.
Uh huh.
Do the engineers think any investigation of the impact of increased flow on the old stone dam?
I know that they considered it at the beginning, but I think they were working with past, the the past study that was done during the conceptual phase. So they didn't take a second look at it. But my understanding was they thought it wouldn't be an issue. To have that increase there, that it would flow over, there would be more flowing over that dam, but that it wouldn't be increasing the actual dam load. Yeah.
Um speaking of the dam, it's been, you know, washed out of the abutment on this side.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Could that be repaired because there will be extra water flowing down, I would think, for this increased flooding and stuff?
I.
What are you referring to, Mickey, sorry?
The abutment on this side of the dam.
Of the stone dam.
Of the dam down there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that abutment had washed out. We had to give them money for the next process, uh but, I won't blame you, so.
It's not us, it was before our time.
Just put that in there though, and I've got that. So um anyway, could that be included where they would just fix that abutment so that it. Didn't wash out more and made further damage?
I could ask them to take, it sounds like basically.
It's not like.
Taking a look.
Huge.
But isn't the, is the whole dam is having problems?
The whole dam has got whole problems, but fixing that abutment would. Just make deturation a little less likely event there's more water coming through, that's that's where it's gonna go and wash out more.
I'll ask, yeah, it might be worth them. Well, it might be worth me to measure some, being like, okay. Also throw this into a cost estimate, just to cross compare.
Yeah, just, yeah, yeah, for two.
Yeah, okay.
Be careful because the weeds have grown up so much, you don't see where it's washed out.
Yeah.
Um.
Maybe we can send, maybe we can send Courtney pictures.
That's even better, I like that.
Oh, come on, I thought you were coming back with white pants.
Don't you have to call me?
I have to hear a lot, so. Okay, any other questions? Good, good point though. All right, we're gonna move on to Hoopai Road then, this should go significantly faster because it's a much simpler design. Um so just as a refresher, this project came off of a DEP funded. Three nineteen, section three nineteen of the Clean Water Act funding, um this is based off the phosphorus loading study that was done for Lake Garfield, which identified. The pollutants loads of phosphorus by sub watershed around the lake and where that blue star is, was one of the higher sub watersheds. That were loading phosphorus, uh during a sidewalk with Sean Dryan, the old DPW director. It was found that this section of Hoopai Road between Elephant Rock and a little past Laurel, Mountain Laurel Way. Was significantly um washing out quite a bit with the dirt road and also contributing. Sediment and therefore phosphorus with it and contributing to the phosphorus loading in the lake. So we uh followed up with DEP Clean Water Act funding that was. Separated from the MVP funding, so two grant fundings coming in and did a redesign of the drainage system of that road. Um namely, it's adding a bunch of these deep sub catch basins along the road, so starting at, sorry, I have to go back. We wanted to do that, one twenty-six Hoopai Road, so just right around where you can kind of see Elephant Rock Road is just beyond that. Um and these deep sub catch basins are, as the name implies, deeper, so even a normal catch basin is about four feet, so we. Put the outlet pipe even deeper than that so that it, the sediment settles at the bottom as water flows through. And so you're sort of with each catch basin removing a little bit of sediment. The maintenance is exactly like a normal catch basin though, you just stick a back truck tube in there and suck it out and sediment, those wherever you put your sediment. And what we use, um the. Pink lines are the swales or like an improved drainage ditch, not a full hole engineered swale, but like improved drainage ditches. To really allow again sort of drainage along the side of the road instead of in the middle. And then the blue lines are the piping that'll be buried under the road. So the big difference between the plans that you see before and these is that the plans before had almost like a skeleton trunk line structure. Where all the catch basins led to manhole covers in the center of the road, but. In talking with the DPW director and the engineer, and that didn't make sense considering that it's a dirt road and it gets plowed. Obviously, as it removes those layers of sediment, it'll like hit the manhole covers and destroy both the plow and the manhole covers, so we took that out. It's a, it's like a negligible amount less of blue load reduction, but we sort of added something in the next. Design section to make up for that loss of blue load reduction. Um and that is by basically piping everything, all of the water from the previous section down the hill into a sediment trap. Which is basically just a um. Let's see if I can do this, it's basically just like a riprap. You know, basin, if you will, that catches the sediment before it goes into the swale. And so this is, this is, uh, this is really nice when you have these swales because it concentrates the pollutants in one space, making it much easier for the DPW. To do any maintenance, so the maintenance would be basically monitoring this periodically throughout the year so that as sediment accumulates, you basically scoop it out. Like it's, you fairly said, bull, um so you scoop out any of the debris and sediment, but it filters it before it hits into the bio swale. And then the entire purpose of the bio swale with the check dam, which are these rocks that'll slow down the flow and allow the water to infiltrate. So that by the time it gets to that stream, in theory, especially under lower flows, it'll be mostly infiltrated. You won't have that much water coming into the stream, so you're reducing the amount of the polluted water that's coming into the stream, which then. Reduces the amount of polluted water going into the lake. Um in addition, so the old designs didn't have that sediment riprap trap, which is, I think, a great addition. Um but what it did have was at the very end, it had what's called a hydrodynamic separator. Which basically swirls water around and then removes the pollutants from the water itself. In talking with the engineer, they sort of thought that was an unnecessary expense and it's often used as a pre-treatment and not a post treatment. So it didn't make sense that it was at the end of the treatment line, if you will, and it would have made more sense at the beginning, so instead they took that out. And added the pre-treatment in the front so that like in a, in theory. This should be all clean, this should be the cleanest it's going to get at this point, right? They did instead add a baffle tank, which. Operates almost exactly as a hydrodynamic separator, but this is not a proprietary design and so it's cheaper. Less expensive, but it does the same thing by separating the tank with these battles and allowing water to go over, so it. Again, similar concepts, right, allowing the sediment to settle out, it gets back trucked the same way as a catch basin. And it's going to treat some of the un, you know, untreated space on the south side of that road. So that you have sort of additional treatment and it's not all made relied on on the upstream side of the road or the uphill side of the road. That is the full design there. Any questions about this, so some some changes, but I think all in all. Keeping the same pollut load reduction, if not more, given that we're sort of adding a pre-treatment section there. Questions? Nobody is interested in this one, I'm very excited, Dennis.
Somebody's got to ask.
Yeah.
Questions, so when will construction start?
Um so, yeah, timeline, thanks, um so the final designs should be done this October and then we'll go to Conservation Commission, DEP. Basically um over the winter and get an NOI, ignore the picture.
I was just gonna say, is that on?
It's not from your, it's from San Antonio, I just need to.
Okay. Wow, was it?
You're like, is it on that there? No, that's from San Antonio, I knew I was gonna get called out on that too, you can't get passed.
Do you know where it is in San Antonio?
I don't, I I took it from their dirt road study.
Because I almost thought it looked like a, just just a section, a little bit uphill of the section you got on Hoopai Road.
See, I do.
It must be.
Oh, similar, then whatever, anyway, uh so we'll go through the Conservation Commission with the final designs um in throughout the winter. And then that'll set us up to do procurement fairly early in the year, which I'm hoping gives us a head start on finding a contractor and getting. A little less, because when you do it too, when you do procurement too late, the prices drive up because now they're like, well, how much is it worth my time? So and then construction should start in May of twenty twenty-four and then to July of twenty twenty-four, we're hoping to get it done. Before the end of the fiscal year, but we have the grant until September of twenty twenty-four. So a much sooner timeframe, yeah. But this one won't require road closures, it's all on the side of the roads. Any other questions about this?
This is a weird question, but how do we know with those stone baffles? Does it not like break the mower?
You can hear.
Yeah.
Weed whacking.
Mowing that and weed whacking?
Yeah, weed whacking, this can also be, so this was sort of a question, this is more of a question for Jim and how he wants to maintenance, it can be a grassy swale. It can also have like native vegetation in it if you wanted, in which case you wouldn't be mowing it, you'd just be, you know, letting it go.
Brush cutting.
Brush, brush cutting it periodically, but mostly just leaving the wildflowers to go. I think it depends on what Jim wants to do maintenance wise, if that's easier for him, yeah. The maintenance of all this is basically look to see if there's sediment, if there's sediment, remove it, like it's, it's pretty simple throughout, so that's, that's nice. Um that's it for me, um my email, all that, thanks for having me again.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, so I'll.
Appreciate it.
Take your questions to the engineers and we'll forget to have a set.
Thank you. I get it out there. Oh, oh, wait, can you try out a cake?
He taught me how to turn on, but not how to turn off. Oh, yeah, this always comes up every once in a while, I'm not sure what happens. I don't know anything about this.
Can, is there, is there just an off button?
I am pressing the off button.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, great. There's two off buttons.
I feel your pain.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you, Courtney. Um, the next item of business is the contract with Southern Berkshire Ambulance.
Do you have?
We just didn't formally approve it and sign it last week, but we had, we discussed it. So, we got Southern Berkshire to sign it. I would move that we approve the contract with Southern Berkshire Ambulance.
I will second.
Yes, is there any more discussion on that? We call a vote?
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimous approval. We'll sign it. Two copies.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Sips on.
So, the only remaining, or the, since we're, we probably won't talk about Southern Berkshire for a long time, I think just the things to keep in mind is that we're gonna be expecting quarterly reports. Also, Melissa, um, Kevin has said that if the initial invoice doesn't work, he'll send another one, but other, other than that, hopefully the invoice can be just processed as normal.
Did we ever work out if there's a way to find out the percentage of calls that they're not able to answer?
They said that they can.
They said, yeah, he said that last week.
Right, I, I thought so, but I-
He didn't have the data with him.
No, but that's fair.
Because he had only the totals, but he didn't have-
That's fair, but as long as the quarterly reports can give us some, uh, a number so that we know if it's like five percent of the calls they're not able to respond to, ten percent, twenty percent, like, it would be good to know.
Well, and I think, Susan, you might want to actually check with Sean to see if his system and record-keeping will show more. Um, did Southern Berkshire show up? Or was it New Marlboro, Otis, Sanisfield? Because this, this contract only requires that they respond to eighty-five percent of calls within five minutes of being dispatched.
But if, but if, if dispatcher knows that they're not available because they already have both ambulances out or they have one ambulance down, and one ambulance is out, then they wouldn't be that call.
Yes, and I think that's actually the majority of what's happening is that, um, Berkshire Dispatch already knows Southern Berkshire doesn't have an ambulance available, and so they go right to New Marlboro, Otis. And I could be wrong, but Southern Berkshire won't tell us that.
I think because they don't know, because they're not getting the call out if they've ordered.
But Sean might. And it's not necessarily that they're not adhering to their contract, but it's information that we should know. As we've discussed a little bit back previously, we're covered under mutual aid. So, if New Marlboro, Otis, or Sanisfield come instead of Southern Berkshire, it doesn't cost the town any money, but it's probably worth keeping track of, especially if it becomes an issue.
The numbers he sent me, it was about ten percent. Five out of the fifty-five to sixty-five calls, so I'm gonna call that ten over a hundred percent.
Yeah, so, that, that's something. I mean, they're easily gonna need eighty-five percent of calls that are dispatched, too. Um, but it's a requirement nonetheless.
Okay.
Um, and they are supposed to give that in their report as well, but not the kind of non-showing that we just discussed. Similarly, the capital plan policy we discussed last week, and I think we're just waiting to see if the Finance Committee had any comments.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear back from them.
I heard back from Amin, who said like-
I thought she said, yes, she said anything.
She said, yeah, like, let's, let's go forward with it, that's, you want me to find the?
No, I saw that.
I now, but think about it, yeah.
So, I-
I think we should approve it.
Yeah.
I, I think we should approve it.
So-
Let's do it.
We will vote on approving the capital plan policy.
In procedures.
In procedures.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And yes, so that's unanimous approval. And so, that is, I don't even know if the checklist. Um, the computer acceptable and equipment acceptable use policy. I did have some comments. Okay.
I look forward to that, 'cause I am like, curious what you've caught.
Comments, but, um, changes. The other thing that I realized through the references to labor law is that we should probably have Town Council review this before we approve it.
Okay.
Just because I think, um, clearly there's some conscientiousness in this already about not preventing people from doing things that they're legally, uh, they legally have the right to do. Um, but it's probably worth running it by Town Council.
You want me to call, or you call first, or?
Yeah, I mean, I would run it by Donna first. Um, I don't mind actually, just sending it to Donna.
Okay.
Um, did anyone have any overarching questions?
No, I, it was one small thing in number nine, in your number list under system and network activities.
Yeah.
That it, there was, like, it's an awkward sentence, I just, like, said that was, it's not, I wouldn't call it substantive, but-
Well, I think I caught the same.
Same one.
I think that we-
Cool, all right.
I think making statements expressly or implied about service unless such statements are part of legitimate job duties. I don't know, I was also confused a little bit, though. Is it saying that employees shouldn't be spreading information publicly about?
I, offers and products, the whole thing is about offering services or products. So, I'm assuming it's consistent with that. So, the, about services unless the statements are part, in other words, you're not allowed to offer people services outside of your normal job duties.
Right.
And you can't even apply that you're gonna do it.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, so, that part I agreed with, it was just the wording of the sentence that was all it, which you caught, too, so it's okay. That was the only other thing, but I, I see your point. I, I agree, it wouldn't be bad to have a look at it.
Okay, so I will take-
You'll run it by Donna?
Yeah.
All right.
The next agenda item is Town Administrator Position.
That, uh, I asked that to be put on, and there's things I wanted to ask the two of you is that we take a look at the job description and say, is this what we want? Is, you know, based on what the three of us know or experience. And then I would like to take it and open the position up for applying. That we put it outside and have a process for accepting applications outside. So, you know, tonight was, you know, is talk about the process, not to find the outcome. You know, I have talked to Melissa about it, and I talked to her and told her that I was gonna propose this to the select, you know, to the two of you. And I just think it's the most important job in town. And we need to go through that process to help educate us and make the right decision.
So, just, I just wanna make sure I understand what's being proposed. Number one is, let's look at the job description and see if we feel like we're still comfortable. You all right?
Yeah, I can't hear too well, so I'm moving on.
I'm sorry, I, gee, people don't usually have trouble with me on that one. Checking to make sure that we feel like the job description accurately reflects the job.
That we, the, what, the job that it is, or, or picture, picture should be in the future.
Um, and part of the, part of my confusion with this, and I think it's a small-town thing, is that it's so common for people in small towns to wear multiple hats.
Uh-huh.
That is not an uncommon thing, and sometimes it's different people wearing the hats, right? So, you know, there's jobs that come up and they get put on people, and in, you know, it might be the clerk that gets them, it might be the secretary that gets them, it might be, you know, whether it's being a board secretary for another board or whatever. Um, at some point, like, that happens, it evolves, and then periodically you need to assess if, if, do we still want it with that same person, or not? And I, I'm not saying I know the answer. I'm just saying I think it should be a regular thing that it gets looked at as things change, and employment conditions change. And it might be that, yes, that should be all the same person. But, just like with the streetlights, it's important to know, like, yeah, you need all those streetlights. Maybe we do, I, I don't know.
I think one w- way to handle that prob, one way to handle that problem, Susan, is just leaving the job description flexible to the, to change by the boards, or not tying it to a contract.
Right.
Um, and of course, putting in provisions about, you know, this job description is subject, subject to change by this board.
And duties as assigned, for sure. But I'm just saying, as it stands now, and apparently, as I understand it in a lot of towns, there are these multiple hats. And it's not like an uncommon thing, right? Especially in small towns where you might not, you don't have fifteen full-time employees sitting in an office. It's not like there's a lot of people to take them on. So, it makes sense that it happens, and maybe it's fine. But right now, we do have some of those other jobs to find, and I, I'm just saying we should look at is that the way we wanna keep it? And the answer, maybe, yes. I am not suggesting that we shouldn't, I'm just saying, I think it's important that it get looked at occasionally. And I, you know, like, the, the flip side of that is, if you just say, well, other duties as assigned, you could end up continually dumping more duties on somebody without recognizing the additional work you're actually putting on them. So, there has to be a balance between the two.
Yeah, uh, just, yeah, in a, in a moment. Just to, um, for more clarity on what you're, the timeline of what you're proposing, Frank, what would the timeline be? I mean, should we start working on the job description now?
Yeah, I would start now. We could, you get into late fall, you know, you get into the holidays, I think, you know, there's six months, we, we could start now. I don't, you know, um, yes, you know, that gets on the list.
Uh, Don Holberg?
Thank you, gonna take just six minutes.
He tied himself.
I did. I thought hard about this, I worked long time on this. And I'm gonna read it part, if you don't mind. Apparently, the board is presently considering whether it should publicly advertise for other candidates to possibly replace Melissa as Town Administrator. I think that course is unwarranted. If pursued, it runs the risk of her preemptively seeking employment elsewhere and, in any case, causing unnecessary and disruptive political strife in the town. Before choosing that road, I'd ask you to consider this issue in this context. She's been our employee for eighteen years. The twenty fifteen Citizens Restructuring Committee, which considered into personal issues in town hall involving her and others, described her as very knowledgeable, highly competent, and completely dedicated to advancing Monterey's interests. The two thousand sixteen Division of Local Studies, Services Study, and Report led to our attempts to hire a part-time administrator. Our first hire began in November two thousand sixteen, was fired less than three months later. Two more attempts were made, no one was found to even take the job.